How are you friends?
Oh, living the dream.
We got camp thing going?
Oh, it's, you know, starting to chug. Starting to chug, hey, names more.
I guess I see.
Yeah, it is.
That's too often.
You start.
Yeah.
One more day.
It's triple eight. Get really good.
I got keys tonight. I'm calling for all I got.
Yeah. So see where we're at.
Kingsboard. They got surplus. And they take all these beds and stuff, they just accumulate. When they go into this friendly building remodel, they buy all the beds, chairs, pile cabinets, everything. All the, all the old stuff to sit in. My staff. They all have the other guys. Have to sit all day.
You got.
They're all there. Um, oh, sorry. We don't, we don't have room anymore.
There's no.
They forgot. Another important issue because of these thousand dollars. I was doing a lot of this last year. I told you, you can do services. We buy those.
Right.
I tried to get to make you guys see.
Reap first. People in the hospital.
Standing there to go to this.
Yeah.
Okay, I will. I stole these letters. No. They should, they should maybe earn about a hundred.
But.
Reap first. I suggest you do that. But if you don't, if you care about.
He knows the fact that he knows.
Kind of in the way. There's here any, there's some.
Yeah. You know, I really want. He's already in the every now and then. That's what I'm saying. I just did that. He loves a good show and they're like some of the party so much shit. He just literally. I'll make three little calls. One day I'll have that. I don't know. Let me tell you this. Man, Jerry.
The, another person trying to find the, what's the address here?
What's the address here?
I can find that stuff outside on everything.
We had ratio of our friends.
Let's see if I can find.
Unforeseen. Seventy seven. You got the words? So, you know, so thanks, bud. Something besides.
Three thirty one Park Boulevard.
Jeff, do you want to sign me in?
That I heard this. That's the phone.
No, that would make. Because he's not, he's like, he's just trying to turn up this. Side of the road, he wants to see what's on. Alex Jordan. Are you?
One of the ones that he wants to talk to. You got something.
The water.
We won't.
Oh, yeah. I run areas. Are you?
Well, it's some of my house.
His days have been a slippery river.
Night sure.
You know, there's.
Hey, everyone, um, we have a, a sign in sheet being passed around right now, please, please do sign in. So, uh, my name is Brian Hill. Um, I am with, uh, Community Development Partners. I associate here, uh, Dylan Cooper is also with Community Development Partners. Uh, we were hired to do this project. So, uh, over the years, the, um, the Department of Environment and Conservation of the State of Tennessee has provided many grants for developing parks and trails, recreational resources across the state of Tennessee. And they were starting to find over recent years that they were putting a lot of money into different park developments that are either, were either not being well utilized or not being well maintained. And so that's when they started to look at, okay, well, we need to help these communities with planning. Understanding what, what are the, what are the public priorities in these places? Um, what can the cities actually afford and maintain? And so they, they decided, um, starting in twenty seventeen, they funded, uh, this, provided a bunch of state funded grants for local communities around the state to develop parks and recreation master plans. Now, a lot of cities in larger areas are doing these on their own because it is going to be a requirement as of twenty nineteen. It is a requirement to get a parks and recreation grant through the Tennessee, State of Tennessee to have a parks and recreation plan. You have to have that master plan in place to identify those public priorities and to, uh, to assess the community's ability to, to develop and maintain parks. So, um, with that in mind, um, another round of grants went out in, uh, in twenty nineteen uh, to support communities like Hawkins County, Rogersville, Churchill in developing a parks and recreation plan. One, you know, again Hawkins County, Churchill and Rogersville combined efforts to, to have one grand that, um, so they're developing one shared master plan. And as you'll see in the, in the process here, um, there are various elements of that plan that apply to each of the communities. Cause obviously Rogersville, Churchill and Hawkins County maintain your own budgets, have to make their own decisions. So there's separate portions of the plan, but it is one shared plan. So, uh, Community Development Partners, we have over the last thirty years helped, uh, communities all over the state, um, uh, develop parks and infrastructure. Um, we have supported, uh, communities in pursuing, um, almost over half a billion dollars in development projects over the last thirty years. And, uh, we do a lot of project management. I am a certified planner under the American Institute of Certified Planners. So that is primarily my job. I work for the company to help communities identify their priorities and to make plans to actually get, make those priorities happen. What can communities budget every year? What, what does the community, what does the public want to see? Um, what might that look like? What's feasible? And so we, we've been doing this for, 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 for several years now. And, um, it's kind of a background for where we are here tonight. So, again, this was awarded in twenty nineteen. Over the last several months, we have, uh, had a, a, a survey out, public survey, where we got, um, input from the public at large from both Rogersville, Churchill and Hawkins County as a whole, um, about, uh, the, what's working for parks, what they'd like to see more of, what maybe isn't working as well. And, um, we got over, uh, over six hundred responses to that survey. So it was actually a, of very successful in terms of, of the response rate. Um, and so we can say statistically that there is a, a, a very good chance that what we heard from the public is really what the community feels, what the communities feel like here in, uh, in Hawkins County. And so I'm going to present to you tonight, um, a few of the findings of what the public said. And so take the time to check, I'll get, give your feedback on that. And then I want to sort of discuss some general design concepts for, for parks, what elements they should include, um, in the future. And so without further ado, um, I could dive right into it. Uh, before I dive in, actually, I, I do want to say that, um, we just stepped in here, um, Patrick Osborne, uh, he is with the, uh, landscape architecture firm, IBI Group, that is joining us on this effort. So first, you know, why, why develop parks? Why develop parks? Um, obviously parks are places to play, the places to, for, for community to gather, recreate, but they do so much more. They can provide, uh, public health by providing places for people to exercise and get fresh air. They can contribute to the local environment, providing places for wildlife to flourish. Uh, they can stabilize neighborhoods by, uh, increasing the quality of life in an area. They can provide educational opportunities by, uh, you know, partnering with schools and other agencies. And ultimately by increasing the quality of life in a place, uh, parks can, can, you know, attract new employers, attract new job opportunities. And we've seen this in a lot of places where you have smaller communities like Rogersville, like Churchill, um, parks play a tremendous role in, uh, quality of life in an area. So when we're looking at, at how we design, how we plan for future parks in Hawkins County, there are several questions we go through. And these are the same questions that we would go through if we were planning for infrastructure or if we were planning for expanding schools or if we were planning for, um, you know, developing a, a, a new, uh, you know, a new center for, you know, increasing job opportunities, uh, community center. Essentially, the, the, the four questions that you ask as part of any planning process are where are we now? Where are we headed? Where do we want to go? And how do we get there? By engaging the community around these concepts, we can design a plan that is valid and represents the needs of the public. And ultimately, all of the answers to these questions are brought together in a plan document that will then be reviewed by the community. And when I say document, I also mean concepts, the concepts we're planning, through the parks. So what we've done so far, we looked at where we are now. We looked at, um, your existing parks. Um, we looked at, you know, trails, existing programs. We looked at where we are headed. We looked at, uh, demographic and economic trends in the county. And now we're on the step of where do we want to go? Again, there was a survey out that got a lot of the answers to that, over, uh, six hundred responses. Uh, and, uh, we had a community meeting, uh, about a week ago in, in Churchill. Um, we're having another community meeting here. So going through these questions, where are we now? Uh, there are currently ten parks, uh, owned and managed by Hawkins County, Rogersville and Churchill. There's, uh, there's two that are owned by Hawkins County, St. Clair Park and Laurel Run Park. Uh, three by, uh, Rogersville and, uh, five by, uh, Churchill. There are, uh, a number of schools, as you see, I think there's ten schools across, across the county. Um, and the reason we looked at schools, um, as well is because they do provide recreational opportunities. They'll have gyms, they'll have playgrounds, they have fields that are used by the public. And then of course, in addition to those, those parks and recreation resources provided by the city, cities and county, there are a number of, uh, of recreational opportunities provided by state and national organizations. For example, there are, um, there are ten boat ramps and marinas located on the banks of the Holston River. Uh, there is Bays Mountain, uh, state natural area, which actually provides in combination of Laurel Run Park, an amazing array of trails, um, here in Hawkins County. And then, uh, the Cows Ford Wildlife Management Area, which is about a, a ten, or a thousand acre hunting, fishing wildlife area on, on the northern border, border of the county bordering, uh, Kent County. So at Rogersville City Park, um, looking at your, your existing parks, um, you know, it is obviously a large park with a ton of amenities, um, those, those being listed up here on the screen. You know, public survey respondents indicated a great desire for, uh, some updates to this park, including the restroom, ball field and tennis courts. Um, uh, there were some desires to update the ball fields, uh, and, uh, update the restrooms. Uh, there's Crockett Spring Park, um, also here in, in Rogersville, uh, very, very contrast park. Um, it's just sort of a small, almost a pocket park, it's not quite so small, it's a lot block. There, we did find that there was limited signage and ADA access, but other than that, this park is, is a really, it's a gem. Uh, Laurel Run Park can operate it, owned and operated by the county. So this is a big park, it's about four hundred acres. Um, uh, you know, it's connected to about thirty miles of trails. Again, some of those are in Bays Mountain, some of those are at the park itself. Provides a wide array of amenities. Uh, another one, St. St. Clair Park owned and operated by the county, uh, s- smaller park, um, but still has a number of amenities, ball field, basketball, tennis court, uh, bathroom concessions. The, some of the playground equipment is a little bit older and, uh, not ADA accessible as well. You can see it's a mulch playground surface, which is a little bit, uh, a little bit less safe for, uh, for, for kids. Uh, Swift, uh, Swift Mini Park, of course, here at Rogersville. Um, uh, s- you know, it's got horseshoes, restrooms, walking path, picnic shelter. Um, the, the walking path is, is a, in a little bit rough shape, as you can see here, overgrown, small, it's not very accessible, but a lot of great amenities. Um, A Starek Park up in, uh, up in Churchill. Um, this is a, a large park on the Holston River. Almost all amenities there were, were ADA accessible, so it's, it's in pretty good shape. Uh, JW Sally Park, um, this park, uh, had, again, a lot of amenities. However, there weren't any walkways, uh, or other ways to access, um, a lot of these amenities except for just walking across the lines. So limited accessibility there. Uh, JC's Park, um, this is a smaller park. Some of the challenges we saw there, it's a beautiful park, but there are definitely some erosion issues along, along the veins of the, the creek there. And these, these last ones are all up in Churchill. You have SL Taylor Park, about twenty acre park, a walking trail, um, a fish pond and a pavilion. And then, uh, Bill Castle Park, um, which is a, just a small residential neighborhood park. The basketball court, um, as you can see here, it's just one, there's one goal, so it's, it probably be resurfaced and expanded. Playground there, um, the surfacing is not, uh, ideal either, other than that, pretty good shape. Then the Hawkins County Schools, as I mentioned, these provide a great asset and they're used quite a bit by, uh, the community. And I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit more in the, the coming slides. Um, but there are two schools in Bulls Gap, uh, here in Churchill, two in Rogersville, two in St. Louisville. And again, they provide gyms, ball fields, walking tracks, playgrounds. These really do expand, um, the geographic breadth of parks and recreation in the county because there's a lot in the center, there's not a lot otherwise in the center of the county here. It's really kind of the two ends with Rogersville and Churchill. As I mentioned, you know, we wanted to understand in this survey where we got over six hundred responses, um, where folks were going to visit parks, what parks were they visiting more than others? Um, as you can see here, about, um, about eighty percent, um, of park visits were either to Laurel Run Park or Rogersville City Park. This was, uh, uh, obviously two parks with some, creates a number of amenities, um, some of the largest parks, um, both in very beautiful settings. Uh, Crockett Spring Park here in Rogersville also got, um, a good number of visitors, over fifty percent. As did, uh, the city county school gyms and playgrounds. So those again, this played a pretty significant role. We wanted to understand, um, you know, what, uh, what folks were doing with the parks? What activities did they partake in most? As you can see here, uh, walking and hiking is by far the greatest, uh, the, the greatest number of, of recreation activities where you're hiking and walking or, uh, jogging and running, uh, which together they make up about a quarter of parks and recreation, um, uses in the, uh, in Hawkins County. Um, other popular activities included using playgrounds, swimming, um, volleyball, uh, uh, basket, or baseball softball, um, and then, uh, teen and adult athletic programs. So as, we asked the similar question, you know, how important they thought these, these, these same activities were? And you can see here, they do mirror pretty closely, um, in terms of what people were doing most and what they thought was most important. But I do want to say, point out that, that everything sort of lifts up. People said that everything was at least, you know, most things had at least a somewhat a most important, uh, role to play. And you see even here where you have the, uh, popularity, only, you know, about one percent of, uh, respondents said that they used, uh, pickleboard or shuffleboard as a regular activity. That said, one in five, uh, respondents said that they wanted to see more pickleball and shuffleboard opportunities. Well, they're not taking part in those activities because they don't really exist. So if you were to provide them, that would obviously provide, um, uh, a lot more usage. Um, so, so these two graphs together really tell a, a complete story. Uh, similar with some of the other elements here, um, that, that may or may not exist in the county. Um, but you definitely see some of the most popular, um, elements, you know, walking, hiking, jogging, uh, playgrounds, gazebos and pavilions, so those passive recreational opportunities are obviously some of the, uh, the most important to maintain in the county. There's also a few amenities that we see around the state that parks sometimes have and sometimes don't have that, uh, we found the public wants to see more of. So we asked amongst a series of additional amenities like updated or added lighting at the parks, wifi at the parks, increased security or public restrooms, how important those items were? And one thing I want to point out is that it, it becomes very clear that, uh, you know, public restrooms and increased security are, are two of the, the very most important, followed closely by increased, uh, in, uh, increased, uh, or updated lighting. And then, you know, some of the, the least important elements were, you know, having more access to wifi. We also wanted to hear from the public what improvements they would suggest for, uh, for the parks to improve them. Um, and we, uh, we took all of their responses and we sort of put them into various categories based on the type of responses we received. And, uh, you can see here, these are the responses we received, followed by the count of those responses. So, um, you know, forty-eight respondents said that they wanted to see more, more beautification of the parks. They wanted to see the parks updated more, more often. Uh, twenty-eight said they wanted to see more safety and security improvements. Twenty-four said, uh, cleaner, updated restrooms. You can sort of see the top priorities here for improving the parks. Uh, you know, and the list goes on, a, a few of them, including, uh, uh, you know, even, you know, providing skate parks, camping and fishing opportunities, improved accessibility, seating and shade, you know, these are a few less responses, yet they still did get several responses each. In terms of accessibility, we need to make sure that parks are accessible to individuals regardless of their age or ability. So we asked in the survey how accessible Rogersville's parks and recreation, uh, amenities are to everyone regardless of their age and ability. And as you can see here, a vast majority, almost ninety percent, said that the parks were either accessible or very accessible. Only four percent said they were not accessible. But we did want to know if they're not accessible, what suggestions does the community have to make them more accessible? Well, you can see about thirty-three responses said that, uh, that people should, or that the city should provide more walkways and ramps, more accessible bridges. About nineteen said that we wanted to see more accessible restrooms. Uh, extra, more accessible, uh, ADA equipment at the playgrounds. Improve the communication and advertising, uh, accessible, improved parking. So these are some of the top, uh, the top amenities that people said would improve accessibility. Next, we wanted to hear how folks are hearing about parks and recreation opportunities, whether that's a special event or an amenity of the parks. You can see here that, uh, the majority, about fifty, uh, fifty-five percent, either heard about those, those activities and amenities either through family and friends or through social media. Uh, the local newspapers and then school flyers both do, provide a pretty significant, uh, uh, I guess, way to communicate about parks and recreation opportunities, making up together about a quarter of all, um, uh, responses here. So, um, the city and county, cities and counties should continue to use both local newspapers and school flyers in addition to social media and, and just, uh, family friend networks. Other than the parks and recreation opportunities provided by the cities and the county, we wanted to know what, what residents of the county and visitors to the county were doing outside of those amenities. And so when asked, people gave us their open ended responses about what they were doing in the region. And we took their responses and we put them in a word cloud. And what a word cloud does is it makes the words that are repeated more often, then it makes them larger. And the words that are repeated less often are smaller. So you can see here, when asked what regional, uh, outdoor recreation activities, um, residents were getting into, you can see that hiking, walking, biking, boating, kayaking, um, as well as a few of the popular, um, uh, activities such as baseball and basketball are really what sort of stand out. Gives an idea of, of what we should focus on in the future. Another way that we looked at the effectiveness of the parks and recreation programs and services in Hawkins County was to compare Hawkins County to similar counties around the state as well as, uh, just metrics provided by the National Recreation and Parks Association. So those metrics are the areas of park acres, trails, recreational programs and program revenues. So just sort of comparing Hawkins County and cities to similar amenities. You can see here, we compared Hawkins County to three other counties that are sort of similar in, in, uh, area, uh, population size. So you get sort of, uh, you know, sort of, sort of control for those factors. And there are different regions of the state control for, you know, various, uh, factors outside of our control like, uh, climate or types of, uh, types of, of, of land or topography. So comparing Hawkins County to Coffee County, Cumberland County and Tipton County provided us, um, the benchmark comparison for this effort. You can see here in terms of park acres provided per thousand residents, um, in, uh, in Cumberland County, there were twenty, about twenty-seven. In Hawkins, it was about nine, six in T- in Tipton, four in Coffee. And looking at the, the, the sort of the median for the nation as a whole, it's about twelve acres, uh, per thousand residents. So, you know, Hawkins County, um, and has, you know, perhaps a little bit of room to grow in terms of the acreage it provides, but it's pretty good. Pretty close. And I want to mention Hawkins County contains a total of about four hundred and thirty acres, um, uh, for recreational purposes. Looking at trail miles, this is, uh, an area where Hawkins County and cities really excel in. A lot of this has to do with, uh, Laurel Run Park and the trails it connects to in, uh, in Bays Mountain Park as well. There, there are about thirty-seven trail miles, uh, either in or directly connected to the county. So, so Hawkins County does part of my better than I give the comparison communities. So, you know, overall, uh, looking at the existing conditions, you know, most of the parks in Rogersville, as in the rest of the county, are in good shape. Uh, those that needed updates, most of them are minor. There were a few large investments that will be needed. Uh, the community survey illustrated the, the things that, that, uh, participants were most interested in in terms of their, their ongoing activities at the parks and the things they'd like to see more of, the things that are participating in the region. And the benchmark comparison illustrated that, you know, that Hawkins County and cities are doing well in terms of park acreage and extremely well in terms of trail miles that it provides. Which brings us to the next question in the planning process, where are we headed? So for this, we looked at fifteen year trends, um, and, uh, over the. So for this, we looked at fifteen-year trends, um, and over the next fifteen years, where we think we're going to go based on what's been happening in the past and what's happening now in terms of, uh, population and demographics. So you can see here from this graph, there are about fifty-seven thousand, um, people living in about twenty-four thousand households in, in Hawkins County. We expect, um, that to stay largely stable over the next fifteen years, not to decrease much, not to go up a lot either. So we expect that to be largely stable based on trends. And I will say, at Hawkins County's, uh, we're looking at Hawkins County and its population changes. We used, uh, both information through the US Census, as well as through the University of Tennessee Center for Business and Economic Research, which is the source that's used, um, by most agencies around the state. In terms of age distributions, uh, we anticipate Hawkins County and its cities are going to continue to get a little bit older over the next fifteen years. Currently, those over sixty-five comprise about twenty-two percent of the population. We expect that to go up to about twenty-eight percent by twenty thirty-five. And then, uh, in terms of, of race and ethnicity, uh, currently, you know, like most parts of the state, the white non-Hispanic category makes up a, a, a fairly large majority. That's expected, the, the county and its cities are expected to continue getting more diverse over the next fifteen years, although the white non-Hispanic category is expected to still take a, a, a large majority, with the, the fastest growing minority being the other non-Hispanic category. In terms of household income, uh, based on the trends we've seen over the last, uh, the last ten years, we anticipate that, uh, household incomes are going to continue going up in Hawkins County and cities. Currently, they're at, um, just shy of fifty thousand dollars a year. We expect that to go up to about sixty thousand dollars per year by twenty twenty-five, based on the, on the trends. So what does all of this mean? Obviously, when you're looking at, at future trends, you know, it's, it's always a bit of a guessing game. You're bound to get it wrong, but if you want to look at orders of magnitude, how, how do things look like they're going to change compared to other places in the, in the state and in the country? I want to say that, you know, these, these trends in terms of demographics, population, economics, they're not the only determinants of how we design parks. We of course need to take first in the consideration what the public wants to see and what the cities prepared to take care of. We anticipate, uh, the, the county and its cities to, uh, maintain a fairly stable population over the next fifteen years. Not a lot of growth is expected, but, um, probably, probably fairly stable. We expect to see the population continuing to age. We expect continued wage increases, which could increase opportunities for recreational opportunities. So what does all of this mean? You know, we need to balance. We need to balance those, uh, services, for example, for aging populations. I mentioned before, uh, the shuffleboard, pickleball courts. People said a lot more wanted to see those than were available. So we need to, we need to provide those services for an aging population, those lower impact, um, activities, as well as the natural areas, while at the same time providing those activities that are going to draw in younger families. Which really dovetails into, into the next question in the planning process, well, where do we want to go? So we asked in the survey, um, how parks and recreation should impact the community as a whole. And as you can see here from this graph, there was a series of options that, that, uh, participants could, uh, could select. And they can select as many as they thought were appropriate. As you can see here, that, that accessible places to enjoy nature, fun for participants and observers, and improved physical and mental health were some of the, uh, some of the most favorite factors. But overall, you see, um, respondents wanting parks and recreation to provide a wide variety of services for the community. And so this really says that Rogersville and Hawkins County and Churchill should, should continue making efforts to provide a variety of parks and recreation services to meet a lot of different needs in the community. This, uh, this slide is really important. We wanted to understand, you know, we just asked an open-ended question to try to understand what additional activities or amenities are needed in, uh, in Hawkins County and its cities. And we took that open-ended responses and again, we put these responses in a word cloud. So the word cloud, again, shows the larger the word, the more that word was repeated and the responses we received. The smaller the word, the fewer times it was repeated. So you can start to see patterns emerge right away. Respondents wanted to see more greenways. They wanted to see more splash pad opportunities. They wanted to see, uh, community centers with activities. They, uh, they wanted to see, um, more, uh, more opportunities for, for youth leagues, um, for dog parks. So you can, you can see here right away what some of the most important elements are and what some of the elements are that were possibly the less important to the local communities here. One of the other things that we did as part of the planning process was to engage each of the, uh, each of the agencies in the county, Hawkins County itself, as well as Rogersville and Churchill, Churchill who were participating. And we wanted to know what parks and recreation needs they saw, what plans they already had to improve their parks. Now, these are not the final recommendations we're going to make in the plan. The final recommendations will include everything we heard from the survey, everything we heard from these community meetings. But this provides us a, a place to start the conversation about what improvements are needed and how important they are. So looking at this slide, you can see that there are basically improvements that are slated at all of the existing parks in, uh, in Rogersville, as well as in Churchill. There is also plans in both Rogersville and Churchill to develop new parks. In Churchill, they want to look at developing a new, uh, river recreation park, uh, down on, on the Holstein River. And here in Rogersville, um, there's, there's, there are plans to develop a new recreation center adjacent here, right here at the, at the municipal park. So looking at, um, the actual, uh, the actual improvements that we, we discussed, there are ADA improvements planned for Rocket Springs and Swiftman Park, and then a new recreation center in the building adjacent to the municipal park. In addition, there would be improvements that, that the city would like to make at the municipal park here, including, uh, a replacement of the pool liner, renovation of the bathhouse, um, new pavilions, and a walking track. Looking at the Churchill area, um, now this is of course, just like in Rogersville, these include both Rogersville and, uh, and Hawkins County parks. The Churchill River Recreation Park that's planned would, uh, include an indoor recreation center, multiple ballfields, soccer, playgrounds, picnics, campgrounds, and trails. Now I will say that's still in pretty early stages of development, so there's still some opportunities for some of those things to change. Let's see here, uh, at Laurel Run Park, um, there's a, the bank, banks need to be stabilized. They'd like to see a bridge to the waterfall. That's a very popular amenity there, there's no direct way to access it. And then, uh, there's a series of improvements at the other parks, um, from playgrounds, installing shelters, improving lighting, these are popular, placing old playground equipment. Basically, every park in Churchill has some improvements that, uh, that, that the city would like to make over the coming, uh, over the coming five to ten years. So this takes us to the final question in the planning process, how do we get there? Now, when it comes to implementing parks and recreation improvements, there's really only two ways to do it. You pay as you go, or you borrow. Pay as you go includes grants, it includes leveraging fees such as developer impact fees or, uh, or, uh, user fees, and it includes moving things around in the budget. There may be line items in the budget that can, that can be moved around. And then borrowing includes, um, of course, uh, taking on a loan. Oftentimes, there are low-interest loans through various agencies, um, like USDA or World Development that provides loans at one percent below market rate. So we wanted to know from the public how much support there was for, uh, for increasing funding for parks and recreation. When we asked in the survey, you can see, uh, a vast majority, over seventy-five percent, said that they either agree or strongly agree that parks and recreation funding should be increased, while only two percent or three percent said that they either disagree or strongly disagree. Of course, then we asked how we should pay for it, what are the sources of funding that should be used? And this is a pretty common, uh, this is a pretty common spread. We see this in communities around the state. About forty-five percent said that they wanted to use grant money, um, for parks and recreation improvements. But we asked them if they thought grant money should be used, what should be used for the match? Grants are never free, there's, there's always a match. And in the case of the state-funded parks and recreation grants, that's fifty-fifty match, so that's pretty significant. And then, uh, the, the next most popular, uh, funding source for parks and recreation improvements was, was borrowing, taking on bond, bonds or, uh, or, or long-term financing, which, which could, could include, uh, uh, many different sources of bonds, but that was definitely a popular element. About, uh, one in four, uh, twenty-six percent said that fees, either user fees or developer impact fees, should be used, uh, to increase, uh, to improve parks and recreation. And then, uh, five percent indicated that, that they'd be in favor of increased property taxes, not a very popular one in most communities. And then, uh, two percent said they were against all sources of funding for parks and recreation. So does anybody have any thoughts so far on what I've shown you? Kind of, cue a lot, I'm sure, just now?
Very fond kind of picture. The other day I suggested that you could, we consider parks, uh, on the north side of Prince Mountain. And, uh, as you can see, uh, the south side, from Churchill to Moultonburg, we've got ten or eleven parks, but don't have anything up there. Don't have any retail, uh, in the paddocks, from College Fort in Hancock County to, uh, uh, Treadway. Which gets into Grand River County and Hancock County again. So, uh, the only place they got to meet is like the Department of Art, Mr. Churches, or, or, uh, Queen's School. And that's, that's not very...
Not very conducive.
Pardon?
Not very conducive.
No, no, that's the word I'm looking for. So, uh, let's remember that.
These bugs might be, please, sorry.
We're, we're from the, we're, we're, in fact, that was going to be my point. You referred to Rogersville as the western end of the county, and there's a whole lot of the county that's west of Rogersville.
Sure.
That just, that draw, this one, and that's where we're from.
Some more so west of Rogersville.
So that, in the Moore'sburg area, is that what you're saying?
Right.
I guess, just in, in general, are there things that you would say that you, you, you like or you dislike about the existing parks in, in, uh, in Hawkins County or in the cities, or? The things that are working, you like the trails, you don't like, you don't like the poor conditions of the ball fields.
I will speak up and say that tennis courts are in need of stuff.
That's a good feedback on tennis courts, resurfacing nets, trip hazards.
And our suggestion is if you're going to resurface and re-strike them, re-strike them for tennis, but also for people. It's not that much additional, just to do that.
Right, right, there was a suggestion for that, and I know that, that, uh, tennis court can, can provide multiple...
Yeah, uh, depending on the layout, you can get a lot of, um, real estate, um, or pickleball. So that would be great.
I believe pickleball is like one of the number one, one of the top current sports.
Honestly, I didn't know that a survey was being done. I don't know how that was publicized, and I wish I had known because I, I couldn't, we could have raised that pickleball, um, interest, pretty much. So, um, yeah, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the United States right now, and it's for all ages. And you can piggyback on your tennis courts, even basketball courts, you can line them up for pickleball. So, um, in answer to your second question here, I guess that's... I know from our viewpoint, we see, and it's not just, it's not just a small group. I mean, I think there's a, it could be a very wide interest if the facility was there.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I hear a lot about, you know, walking and hockey trails as well, I mean, just from community members.
Sure. So walking hiking trails in general, do you have any thoughts on, on, on places that, obviously, most of the trails right now are up, up at Laurel Run Park in Churchill. You know, would there be, I know one of the, one of the plans is to have a, a sort of a walking track here at the, the municipal park. You know, do you have any other thoughts on the areas where you'd like to see more trails or areas where you think trails would be a good fit?
I think we could improve when we are here in, in Rockford City, you know, park, you know, just, because years ago, you know, we had an obstacle course kind of went around, you know, but I think that's would be great. Or, or what I could say, you know, a lot of people wanted to live walking in Hoxton, but I'm not necessarily one for the Rockford City park. I think in the previous point about communication, uh, Mark Dewitt, I'm on Rogers and Board of Mayor Oliver, I'm a officer of County Commission, but, uh, to the previous point about communication, about the survey, I'm real pleased to have Matthew on board as, as the new Park and Recreation Director. And I'm sure he knows that communication is going to be key. You know, there are youth leagues that people really didn't even know we have, or when they started, or when signups were, when, when things like that were happening. And, uh, I think there could be a whole lot more participation in that kind of thing, which would draw more attention to the park if communication was, was there as to, you know, what ages they were for, add some things, you know, make sure that people knew about it. And I'm sure he's got plans to do that, but, um, and I'm excited that that, that's going to be part of what's going to start happening in the park too. And, uh, you know, I, I think the, the BMA is willing to do quite a bit, and Todd's on, on the BMA with me, and, uh, and he's got quite a big interest in the park too. So, um, and, and Manzi is Chamber person, we're, we're all interested in making sure the park here gets what it needs. We've been after a new liner for years.
I know.
You know, and that, that's key. And, and there are ways to do it without raising taxes, things like that. And we haven't raised taxes, I've been on BMA for ten years, something like that. We haven't raised taxes in, in that long. And there, there are ways to get money funnel to the park. And there, I'm excited about the new addition of indoor facilities and so forth, bringing tourists in. Kegville has had tournaments and things like that, that would be an attraction for Rogersville and, and bringing people in from all over the place. This golf course needs to be finished with concrete pads and things like that. You know, it's, it's, from what I understand, it's a good course. Friends of mine in Kingsport were the ones that suggested it to me to bring it to the park board. You know, they, they went ahead and did that, but we need to finish that off and make it one of the stops in the, uh, in the circuit. You know, this golf people are rabid, they travel from, from course to course to course. And it brings people through here, it's a, it's a tourist attraction. And anything that we can do to bring, bring people in that, that, uh, you know, will spend some money here. We used to have the biggest Fourth of July celebration in the southeast United States. And we, we had one year that according to the Tennessee Highway Patrol, when we had Van Harris in here for a concert, we had fifty thousand people inside the city limits of Rogersville. And it was, it was packed. We, uh, we sort of had to back down on that some, those of us who... And it was, it was packed. We, uh, we sort of had to back down on that some of those of us who were kind of trying to spirit it. Got old and couldn't do it much anymore. And, and, uh, bringing things like that back.
Fourth, Fourth of July celebration.
Yeah, Fourth of July celebrations. Uh, you know, bringing it back to prominence would be great. Uh, things like that. And our, our park is, is well-known and, you know, I'd love to see it come back to the prominence that it once was.
Yeah, I, I love our, our city park. I stopped here flying a drone on the other day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I flew one on the other.
One of the things I think we need to bring was get the community more involved in it, you know. Um, when mine tour played years ago, you know, there, every team had a community sponsor.
Yeah.
Okay.
And now we're not doing that. And I think you've got to, to get the community, because you get the community involved, they will see the needs and they'll help, um, finance some of the expenses for those needs.
We've gotta give it to the community.
Yes, we did.
But, but the, the community needs to know that they need to help. And that goes back to communication.
That's a very, that's a very good point. And I actually wanted to follow up on that, Mark, that you made. Does anybody here have any ideas on, on what works for communication here? How, how do, how do folks get the word out? I mean, you saw there was that slide there about what, how folks were hearing about parks and recreation opportunities.
We've got the, the new editor of the Rogers Board of Duty standing right there.
Still got that new editor smell.
Why don't they just provide the amenities that people want? Because, you know, if you, if you, you host tournaments.
Sure.
People go there and they're gonna come from other areas and they're gonna talk about your park. They're gonna bring people to your park.
Yeah.
Then the locals are, are involved in it also. And so I think, you know, that's, that's one way of, you know, I, I come from the sports side of it. My, my children play in sports. And of course, they did the swim team. They did the softball and baseball and, um, I don't know, but anyway.
And swimming.
Swim, yeah.
Swimming, got a great swimming team.
The, the thing, the thing that we had here, we had a summer swim league that only swam from the end of May to the first of August. And we could beat any team in Kingsport or Johnson City that swam all year long.
And move that inside now? I mean, we could...
That if you provided the opportunity for those children all year long, look what you could have.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's the thing that's, you know, if, if you, if you can provide that opportunity for people to come here and be a part of the community. Cause, you know, you're talking about the tourism part of it. If we host a tournament, they're gonna fill up our hotels.
Right.
They're gonna eat in our restaurants. They're gonna buy gifts. So all that's a, a tax increase that, that we can, you know, have. Which will make people want to do more things to improve the park to, you know, to live there.
And we've certainly made the town more, I say we, the town has become more, uh, attractive to visitors. We've got some great restaurants now in that town. We've got, you know, we've got reason for people to come here. And, uh, you know, Jeff has taken the review. There's more content in the review now than there's ever been. It's got more online presence, Facebook presence. You know, I, I would personally love to see the city webpage with more content than it has and drive more people there. Uh, also on the, the Main Street board. And there are websites that, I mean, we're driving people to all the time for information. But that information has to be fresh. It has to be something that people go to and can find easily.
And they gotta be interacting with the same, right? Yeah, we got, we got this website, that website, this website, but none are talking to the other.
Right.
So as you saw, word of mouth was one of the biggest responses about how people are hearing about it.
Right.
So with that opportunity for social media, more websites, you've got all that opportunity.
Yeah.
To expand.
Well, word of mouth is, hey, go look at this Facebook page. Go look at this webpage. Go look at this, uh, review art.
Right.
You know, get your information.
You know, people just seeing that on Facebook, social media.
Right.
Websites and then word of mouth increases as well.
But, but if we link on our websites again, it's, it might try and get a handle.
Right. It's, it's, it's unbelievable, the amount of questions you'll see just random on Facebook. Hey, you know, when, i- is there gonna be a soccer league this year? When does T-ball start? When, you know, they, they shouldn't have to be asking that. They should be able to go somewhere and see that. They should be able to, to call here and have somebody answer the phone and say, hey, that's, that's when, you know, this is, how do you do it? This, here's your application. Here's where you go to get it. Here's how you file it. Here's the ages. Here's all your information in one place. Big job, Matthew.
I know.
Where do I know?
One thing that I think, you know, with help, and I'm not too familiar with the cause, but there's any number of rec software's out there that, you know, when you register a kid for T-ball, that kid's in your system.
Yeah.
Contact information.
Yeah.
And over the years, you, you're building a database of participants. And when it's time for baseball signups next year, you, you just go back and shoot a message to last year's participants and the year before.
Well, find out, bring it to the board, you know, bring it to the BMA. We...
That's on my list.
We're not, no, we're not gonna shoot it straight down next week.
Communication tool.
That's a great thing.
And it's a membership, you know. Over time, you're just exponentially expanding the number of people that you're able to communicate with. Um, they've got email and text capabilities. Um, yeah, that's a great resource. It's got scheduling capabilities as far as games. Room rentals, pavilion rentals, all rolled in here. One system.
Of course, you got Sarah here. She's got her finger on the pulse of, you know, all the county park stuff, so.
Sarah's here in the talk.
Okay.
Let me ask, when it, when it comes to funding of the projects, I might have missed it, but there's a fair amount of industry in Hawkins County. Uh, I mean, is it, uh, feasible at all to ask industry if, you know, they sponsor any particular upgrade projects?
Sure.
Of course.
And we've had, in the past, they used to do that, but we just, we just kinda away from doing it for whatever reason. And so...
It's part of a cultural phenomenon across the country.
And, you know, I think you have to get a need to learn the point you're, you know, and because we, we have industries, I mean, before that would be very helpful.
Well, companies like the, the others out there, there are a couple of projects.
Yeah, and they'll have their names on a team shirt or things like that. That's the way it used to be. I mean, my dad was one of the people who brought Dodge Manufacturing here. They always had a...
Not all of that, but they sponsored the building.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Right. If you just show the projects, the plan and go to some of the, you know, bigger industries around, I bet there could be some support.
And we've got some newer industries. I mean, look at Premier, maybe Vegas, something in Harlem.
Or include not just, you know, sports teams, but projects. Right, I have a question on that. Yeah. So, uh, talking about pickleball being one of the fastest growing sports and talking about it being successful in the past. I think also thinking of, uh, non-traditional sports that didn't exist when any of us were, were kids, right? I think, uh, the, the only thing beating up pickleball is esports. So esports tournament, the people come and spend huge amounts of money to come in and sit in the room and watch people play video games, watch their kids play the video game. For some relatively small kiddies, get some hundred bucks, draw in from around the community, getting facilities that can support things like that. That, you know, the people in this room are not thinking, well, you know, a lot of us are not thinking about that on a day-to-day basis. We think parks and rec and it's all the outdoor stuff, not indoor stuff that kids actually are, are looking at. So I think looking at those non-traditional sorts of things should be a really big draw for people in and outside of the community.
It's a great idea. Might certainly be combined with the, the recreational centers that are being planned in both Churchill and Rogersville, you know.
Like cornhole or something, you know, and that's a big, that's a big thing right now.
Sure.
Uh, road tournaments like we used to have, like in the wintertime.
Cornhole tournaments?
Yeah, just, we used to have road tournaments right here. Just, you know, my experience, I mean, I look forward to that every winter, like, you know.
Yeah, Segrowsa Riverfront Festival has a huge horseshoe tournament every year. They canceled this year, but, uh, they draw a lot of people.
I'm glad you brought that up. Actually, on that note, like, you probably have noticed that there's not much, there wasn't much in the presentation or much discussion tonight about Segrowsa. They were not a participant in this plan. Um, they, they chose not to participate in this planning effort, which there was a, there was a small path by, it was, it was a few times. They, they just decided not to. So, um, they may, we may plan for them in the future and hope they can integrate the plans if that happens, uh, that, uh, that's why I missed it here.
Yeah, it's a shame. I probably didn't get into it either because they have a big park and they're actually doing a lot of stuff at their park right now too.
Sure. I'm sure it'd be useful.
And Bowls Gap too. Bowls Gap just opened a new park.
Sure. So, you know, looking at, um, looking forward at, you know, some of these parks and recreation improvements we see, particularly here, these in Rogersville area. I think this is where we are today, of course. Um, you know, in terms of the, I know that the, the, there's some improvements here at the park that, you know, have kind of been waylaid, like the pool liner. I know how important that is. Um, some of the other elements that they're wanting to improve, walking and, uh, concession areas, um, you know, perhaps updating some of the playground equipment. You know, in terms of the, the priorities we're looking at here at the municipal park, um, the new Rogersville Recreation Center, which would be, of course, this building right over here. Um, and then some of these ADA improvements at the Crockett Springs Park and Swift Mini Park. Would you all say that there is a, that any of these are, are higher priority than others?
We got bridges. Well, there's, there's been some improvements made. Crockett Springs, uh, just put in, uh, three ADA, um, bridges, but the walking trail was still, I mean, it's, it's handicapped accessible. Probably not the best handicapped accessible. Um, and we just did, uh, some improvements. We done, uh, just, at Swift Park, we probably, we did a hundred thousand dollar project on the, on the five-year period. And, uh, right now getting the playground equipment set up up there that, uh, had been lacking for many years. So, so there's, there's things being done. Uh, you know, it's just like you added that elephant one by the time. And, uh, when, when this park here, you know, in the vents of this park, when it was built, we didn't have all the ADA standards. It had to be that. And so now we're having to go back and fix a lot of that stuff. And I think that's, you know, once again, you know, Matthew, I love you. I know that you, you've got some great ambitions, but, you know, he can't fix it overnight. And, and I hope everybody understands that. And, you know, he's, uh, uh, he's, he's coming into a lot of issues that are gonna have to be dealt with. And ADA being one of the biggest ones because, you know, there's just that one person waiting to say, you know, make that, make that happen now. And, and like I said, because it was not required at the time, a lot of the stuff that was done here, so I think, you know, uh, as, as we start. And what we're trying to do is, is the Main Street program and the city Rogersville is every time we make some kind of repair. That we're, at that time, we're making an ADA. The dog park that we're just putting here is everything in its IDA.
Gotcha.
And so, you know, um, so it's, it's, you know, it's a process.
Yeah, that certainly can be a longer-term thing. Uh, in terms of any of the major capital, uh, updates at, uh, you know, at the Rogersville Municipal Park or at the adjacent community center. Uh, you know, what, what do you think is most important?
I'm, I'm glad to see that there, the, the splash pad showed up on there really significantly. I've been pushing that for a long time. I mean, we've got area here, we've got a kiddie pool that really basically isn't used. That, that needs a lot of work. So, I mean, we could, we could flip that over to a splash pad and, you know, you know, I think, I, and I, I'm not planning at all. But I, I'd love to see an addition like that somewhere in the park at some point.
Yeah, those are very popular these days. So it sounds like, a- and, you know, ADA is something that we're gonna be working on on a, on an ongoing basis. Um, but in terms of capital investments, you know, perhaps, uh, you know, the updates at the pool and then, and then the splash pad.
Well, all, I mean, all of it.
There's a lot of things to...
Yeah, all of our toilets need to be upgraded. Um, uh, they haven't been upgraded in several years, you know, and, um...
Bleachers.
Bleach, the concession stand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Restrooms. I mean, all, all those things are things that are gonna have to be, you know, upgraded.
And security of all of it so that it doesn't get destroyed.
Yep.
Before we... I think we, I mean, marketing, we need cameras. Yeah. You know, throughout, and innovative lighting and cameras and, um, and there's a lot of ways, I think. Of course, I'm excited to have Matthew, you know, on board. Like, Mark is, and we've been on the Park and Rec Board. Awesome. And I think security, you know, maybe we can tie cameras, you know, to the central dispatch and have them watch and if something's going on, send, send officers up that way. And, um, you know, they'll find another place to congregate. And once you start sending officers up there, you know, if something's going on, so. I think security is a, of these huge issues. One of, one of the, one of the points of having the disc golf course was to have traffic through all of the parts of the park. That was good traffic versus the bad traffic.
Sure.
So, and, and, and if, you know, back to the point of fishing that up where we can attract a whole lot more people to that and have them tr- traveling through the park.
Sure.
Would be, I, you know, I think worth its weight in gold as far as that.
That makes sense.
Yeah, because we, at Swift Park, we put in, we installed two lights and changed the whole dynamic of the...
Yeah.
And just re- repositioned the other four. And, you know, I mean, very few issues.
You put more light at cameras and...
Yeah, that's something that's gotten, you know, a lot cheaper than it used to be. You know, there's cameras and lighting in particular and that's...
Well, it's actually a cost factor. You know, with the new lighting, it will cut your electric bill because you're not using those old sodium rods.
Yeah, exactly. And when you, you know, when you have somebody that, in the police department, it's already on call all the time anyway, monitoring the cameras is just kind of a win-win. So...
So we have this great little park in the St. Clair area.
Yeah.
And I've never been there and someone was in the park. Never. Um, the park director says he has rarely seen anyone in the St. Clair Park. There's a little church to the side of the park and I think they utilize the park more than anyone. There is, um, a tennis court there. So when I hear these folks, you're from Morrisburg area? So St. Clair would not be that far of a drive for you, uh, if we could utilize the tennis courts there, which no one ever uses. Um, and set it up for this pickleball. Do you think that would be too big of a drive? Do you think that would break the...
We don't know where St. Clair is.
Yeah.
Do you have the little dock at the, the park over there on that?
It's pretty far.
You know, basically.
It's a narrow lining though.
It's one of the teams. The ferry, the one that's changing and just, it's not that far. It's, there's a big, uh...
We have very nice bathrooms there.
They'd rather know. I think with two...
Yeah, it wouldn't be, you know, it's probably...
At least thirty.
Probably need a little bit of, of, of maintenance to, I don't think it did that, that a change, but...
That's what I think.
There it is. So it's, it's right, that's, that's St. Clair Park right there. We're obviously, we're obviously up here. So it's, it's right when you enter the town.
It's south of the park.
Yeah, just south of the park.
Going to the ferry.
The ferry, church.
You can get out and ride around. It's square.
Six, seven minutes from the, the ferry, the row.
I would leave, I'd make these two.
So that could be a possibility to bring people to St. Clair Park because no one uses it all, no bears, like, bears. I've never seen it. I know when our park director, uh, was shortly in it, I was supposed to be parking.
Yeah.
I'd go over there and take a, take a, take a, take a...
That's on the south side.
Pretty low my pink one here.
Yes, I do a great talking about it. I've never seen you.
Oh, here, yeah. I believe it's, it's, it's this. Yeah, I think you say so, yeah. So that's, that's a lot of, I mean, it's great, great lighting. You can see it coming up here. So I guess probably like, it's a station. That's a lot of, a little good there. So it's, it's, you know, it's only a river from the mountain. That's a lot of, a little good there. So it's, it's, you know, it's only a river from the mountain.
Yeah.
Brad, that's, that's a good, um, slide to have up there. So, um, as he mentioned, I'm Patrick Osborne. I, uh, work for IBI Group, for landscape architecture firm in Knoxville. And, uh, our assistance to, uh, community development partners on this is, uh, going out and actually performing the evaluations for each of the parks. So, a couple of weeks ago, I was out, um, and some of y'all may have seen me out taking pictures at the different parks. But, um, spent about a day and a half out just going out reviewing the different parks and, um, I mean, one thing that we've heard is, I mean, obviously there are improvements that need to be made, made, but, um, one thing that you all have that's really great for a community accounting size is that all the parks tend to have a lot of unique, uh, amenities. So, um, like with Rogersville City Park here, it's very sports focused. You have the SL Taylor Park and Crockett Springs, which are, um, not like more heavy on bike walking, kind of more passive recreation. Then you have like Royal Run where you have more kind of naturalistic and then, then the hiking opportunities. But, o- one thing that I noticed just going through, and I, I know that we don't have some of the county parks, um, on here from Mooresburg and Mount Carmel and Seguance School, but having that disconnect, uh, between the different communities. And one thing that I noticed just, I mean, because Hawkins County is such a beautiful county, um, there's, and especially among eleven W, there could be potential opportunity for, uh, greenway or bike lane connections that could provide a little bit more, uh, circulation and pedestrian, um, activity, kind of connecting those different parks. That's something that we, uh, just recently, maybe last year, um, completed a study in Knox County, uh, connecting some of the different communities, um, on the north and south and the west side of, of the county. And, um, i- i- it's something that could be a, a really great opportunity is to, um, utilize a lot of the, the open space that you all have on the, the area around eleven W to connect those parks.
That, that's a really good point, Patrick. That is actually, uh, in, in most, uh, in most places now, the biggest, the biggest, uh, public, public space is your streets. The, the most acreage of public space is, is your streets. So, so, so why not use that? There, there's often times driveways large and accommodate something like a, a greenway under the right circumstances. Um, so, and that, and that is something that we've seen in other places as well, other more rural, uh, counties like Flavorn County, for example, has looked at something similar to that. Um, so, so i- it's, it's not just for the urban spaces, but, um, that's a very good point that you brought up.
Now, we had a plan in the past from Crockett Springs up to Rogersville City Park, which brought you through the downtown, and there's even the mile markers, so you'll know how far you went. But, you know, the dollars ran out and we got right outside the city minutes there. So, and you, and you gotta have the, the bigger sidewalks, the ADA sidewalks and everything. So, and the thought behind that pattern was also for the school system, that the kids had a safe walkway to the park if they're gonna go, especially in the summertime. And, um, but we just, you know.
Is that what those markers are on the, on the green sidewalk out there? I noticed, I took, took a couple of pictures of those.
Yeah, that's, if you start, uh, there's three, three different starting points that you can come through the downtown and use that, those as your mile marker type. Remember how many miles it was? I can't remember. But, anyway, from Crockett Springs to Rogersville City Park. And, um, but, you know, like I said, we ran out, ran out of dollars before we got, got it completed, so. But it, it, you know, it, it was kind of already laid out, so it might be something we could look at in the future.
Yeah, and, uh, one thing too that, you can look at from the countywide perspective, and I think from like ma- master planning perspective, if you were to go to that round on a future study, looking at kind of overall, uh, countywide connections is great, but also, like what you're saying, starting small and having just those s- small connections to the different parks and the different communities. I, I know that Churchill would greatly benefit from that as well as Rogersville. But, um, having a plan in place just allows you more of those opportunities for, 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 uh, security grants and giving those different funding from, from the different government agencies as well.
Food for thought.
Well, it's another one of those, and I love Nancy saying just eat that elephant one bite at a time. I, I use that all the time, and I try and give her credit when I do, but, you know, it's, it's, we have made a, a lot of improvements looking at it that way. And, you know, you have to step back and look and see the overall picture. And you go, wow, we have, we have learned some things, and, but it's, it's taken a while.
So, since Patrick is with us, and this is a very good point, but since Patrick is with us here tonight, um, when we're looking at improvements to the municipal park here and the development of a, of a community recreation center, are there specific design elements you'd like to see? Like, for example, you mentioned, you know, a splash pad perhaps, and where the, where the kiddie pool is rather than. Waiting pools right now. Um, I know, I know, uh, a walking path around the park was mentioned at one point. Um, other, other future ideas for, for what that, what the concept for this?
One of the things, you know, and the schools are very gracious about allowing us to use their facilities. But, um, you know, if, if we had our own facility for recreation, uh, we're missing out on a lot of that opportunities in, in participating with, uh, other communities because we don't have a central place, um, for them to come. And, you know, schools are great, but, you know, they're, you're limited.
Right.
Gotta pay the janitor, you gotta pay. So if you had your own facility, I think, I think that, and, you know, and I'm, I'm an advocate of the indoor pool. We have more and more children here who are swimming. With the indoor pool, you could also have recreation for helpless people.
Sure.
You could do the, the, you know, lots of different things there. So, I, I think that the indoor pool would be a plus for this community.
It's always one of those timing things, though, you know, we, we got the shopping center for a really great price. About the time that construction prices started going through the roof. You know, and, and I unfortunately missed, due to health problems, a few meetings where we had the plans and, and so forth. It's, it's in the hands of the architect. They were supposed to come back with some, some costs and, and Glenn, uh, had to leave. I don't know where we are on that, but, um.
Patrick's saying just went on hold.
Yeah, it went on hold. And we had, there, there's some great design elements that tie into historic parks of Rogersville. You know, city hall and, and some really nice things that if, if we can afford the construction, it would be great.
So, you're saying that, uh, you know, you would like it if, if it, if it, if it all stays within the same sort of theme of the,
Oh, yeah.
Architecture.
Cause you're providing municipal offices, you're providing park and rec offices, you're providing, um,
The facilities.
The facility, yeah.
Indoor gym, the indoor pool.
Bat- new bathrooms, handicapped accessible bathrooms. So, so often a lot of things would do a lot of the upgrades that, you know, it's not gonna be something that we can do immediately. But you could do it with, dear, being part of that project, you're gonna see a lot of changes.
See, we, we retired some, uh, some loans, uh, things like that with the city that we intended to kind of try and shift some of that funding. And I wish Glenn was still here to explain why that's, that's become kind of an issue. But, uh, it, it, it's kind of uncool for the time being. I mean, I, I wish I could snap my fingers and, you know, make it happen, but it's just, the construction costs unfortunately right now are part of the main issue.
Yeah.
And we, we had, we've got great design, uh, I think, and, and the cost is, you know, be prohibited for a little amount. We, we had some bonds, bond issues that we retired. Uh, so, you know, people were thinking that it's gonna really drive taxes up and so forth. But we had a plan in place that it wasn't gonna do that. But with cost, cost the way it ended up being, it, it's prohibited right now.
So, you know, it is, since you brought that up as a conjunction tire, I, you know, it is, we're looking at, at, you know, improvements to the parks within Rogersville, improvements in parks up in Churchill area. Um, and, you know, if we're looking at over the next five to ten years, what we have available to us, you know, every two years, these, these state funded parks and recreation grants are available. And that's a combination of, of, uh, local Parks and Recreation Fund grants, uh, recreational trails program grants, and, um, uh, land and water conservation fund grants. And those, you know, they're at different percentages in terms of match. The, the, the major one, the Parks and Recreation Fund grants, those are fifty fifty grand, but they're up to, uh, up to five hundred thousand dollars with a match. It's up to a million dollar project. So when you're looking at over the next, you know, ten years, it is feasible that, that Rogersville could, you know, complete those improvements that it's looking for at the municipal park and the, uh, and the rec center. At least get the ball rolling on it and, and also, you know, be ADA improvements at the other parks as it goes. That said, we might have to bite off smaller chunks as we go, if you're well aware. So, you know, one of the things that, that local agencies can do in order to keep the ball rolling, even while they're just biting off small chunks of projects, is to do a lot of programming. You know, ultimately, you talked about having people going to, to, to walk around and having a good kind of traffic at the, at this, at the municipal park. You know, ultimately, what you want is you want people out there using the parks. The more people are out there using the parks, the better you're gonna look for future grant opportunities. And really, the more you're just gonna have people noticing for, for, you know, the sake of providing funding in all kinds of ways, you know, they're gonna be using the park, they're gonna be using, you know, your local tax, the things that are contributed to your local tax base. So really, you know, the more we can get people out and using your facilities, the better. So to that end, you have talked a little bit about, you know, a combination of those, those sports events and also those more passive recreational opportunities. Um, uh, whether that's, you know, uh, providing, providing the pickleball courts, providing the, the trails and the greenways. But in terms of programs specifically, are there any other like programs or special events? I know you mentioned the Fourth of July.
Yeah, we do. Well, right now, we do some car shows in the park. Uh, we did, we're, we're heavy into car shows for some reason, don't ask us why. It just happened. So we do a lot of car shows in the park.
There are several concerts through.
Yeah, concerts throughout the year.
A lot of churches pu- bringing, uh, you know, contemporary Christian type bands. Uh, there are. There are a lot of groups that bring in people, uh, as far as concerts and things go.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, just, just bringing in people, and I'm, I'm not on the park board. Uh, and a lot of it's gonna be up to them, but, you know, bringing the people, we're talking about revitalizing the youth leagues. And, and I'm, I'm looking at just these things in, in particular, the splash pad, the pickleball, upgrading and renovating and keeping the bathrooms the way they're supposed to be, the security. And I'm leaving something out. Uh, bringing sponsorships in.
We do a lot of reunions.
Yeah.
There's a lot of reunions that use the facilities.
You know, we, we've got some great, we've got some great, uh, uh, what am I trying to say? The, the buildings.
The building, yeah.
The.
The bottoms of them.
The, 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 the places that they rent out, you know, that they use and as gathering places. Uh, we can bring a whole lot more people in, provided they have the security, the good bathrooms, you know, that kind of thing.
So really, when you're talking about improvements to, to, to Rogersville Park, uh, Municipal Park and the, and the, the new rec center, we're talking about providing first and foremost those basic, those basic amenities, those bathrooms, safety.
Yes, yes, because you hear all the time, you know, I found this, I found this needle over here. I found this broken whatever over here. And, and there are a lot of people, whether it's true or not, you know, it's kind of like perception is reality. We've got a bad element in the park. I'm afraid to take my kids there. I don't wanna go. We've gotta get rid of that. And the security and the lighting and the bathrooms and that kind of thing will go a long way toward getting rid of that kind of stuff. And bringing people back to the park.
And having the park accessible, it's, it's closed too much now.
Yeah.
You know, like you don't open the bathrooms till G anymore, kids start playing up here and that, and that.
And they gotta go to the bathroom.
Well, then you go to the R D.
But you know, just like they still was talking about, hey.
Right.
But we have somebody else.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It, it, it's tough. It goes to, uh, a lot of other things that, you know, we talked about at the Main Street meetings. We, you know, I'd dearly love to see another officer on patrol every shift to be able to help with this kind of stuff and with things that happen downtown. And, you know, we, we need more.
Visibility.
Visibility of officers, uh, and that would help through the park too. But we need to give the park's reputation back to where it was. And that's gonna be a start to allow us to be able to ask for additional money for the type of things we need, yeah, to be in support for the type of things we're talking about. That, it took, in my mind, and I may be completely off base, and I think Todd probably agrees with me.
Yeah, and I think, I think the security and lighting needs to be addressed, like one of the first things. Because before you start making improvements to the bathrooms, to the convenience, to whatever, you know, before it has chance to get destroyed, before you even, you know, so like, get, get your infrastructure, get your security and your lighting in place, then, then, you know, then I think, like Mark said, I think there lives a incredible.
We had, we had a skate park, we had a great skate park. They destroyed it because we couldn't watch it. First thing they did was tore the cameras down, and then they started tearing the elements down. And it's like, well, why don't you have a skate park here? Well, because they tore it down, you know.
We got a dog park.
We got a dog park, you know, and we, we've got cameras on the dog park. It, it was grant funded, and they'll say, well, why, why should the dog park be instead of a splash pad? Well, we got the grant for the dog park. So, you know.
And there's grants for all this other stuff. And there's community help with, with, with Swift Park up there. You know, we had the Rotary Club on board with us, they helped, and it was small grants, but it fixed the small things.
Yeah.
And, you know, we had, um, Kiwanis on board. Of course, a lot of our civic clubs have dropped them, uh, numbers, but they're still willing to help do whatever they need to do.
And I go back to perception is reality. I mean, it, it's a small town, people are gonna talk. And once somebody says, well, they, they did this, or they didn't do that, it's, it's gonna spread whether it's true or not. And no matter how many facts you hit them with, it's still the perception. So if we can start showing them things like the security and like the bathrooms that, you know, are, are gonna stay the way they should be, and like the communication of the, of the programs that are out there. Um, I think that it's gonna take a while to turn it. But that's gonna have to start before we really get, they're gonna say, well, why you throwing money at this when we need improvements over here?
You know, and I've talked to people too, that is willing to volunteer time to help, time and money to help. But they don't know, you know, and, and, and that's where Matthew, I think he's gonna be invaluable. You know, putting together a, a master plan and like, you know, getting out there and saying, you know, anybody wants the help on Saturday, we're gonna work on this section of the park.
Yeah.
We probably have, this community's gonna respond, I mean.
Yeah.
I know they will.
And when this park was built, it was really known as the crown jewel of Rogersville. Of this, this area, and that's what it should be again.
But like you said, it's gonna take.
Tough job, Matthew.
It's gonna take programming.
I've been to a lot of parks, um, and this park in particular is really unique in that it has so many different city pools, a stage, a disco, playground, pavilions, baseball fields, soccer fields.
T-Bone fields, softball fields, yeah.
All in one.
Area.
Location.
Cause as a mom, you don't know how much.
Play disco, you go over here. Play basketball, you go over here. Play this, go over here.
How many parks could you sit on this fence over here and watch your daughter play and watch your son play over here? And I did.
Your views of the city are great.
And you have more revenue opportunity.
And, and we still got plenty of green space. That's the thing too. You still got plenty of green space.
And then you could revitalize the pond too and make that, you know, like that.
It could be nice.
Stop the black fish and, you know, like that, what it used to be.
Yeah. Yeah.
The duck scene is still appreciated.
Trout reviews.
Any, any other thoughts on, on special events, some, you know, festivals? There's something in, is there something here in Rogersville that's, that should be celebrated that's not? That can be a rhetorical question, we don't have to answer that tonight. Something to keep in mind as we go towards the future, because we mentioned programming is gonna be hugely important to fill that gap and what we're able to fund right now, we're gonna have to make up for it.
We just have to make it a fun place to come back to, you gotta, you gotta bring the Easter egg hunts back.
Fun and safe, fun and safe.
Fun and safe, yeah, and, and things that, that, that kids want to come up here. I mean, when, when my kids were, you, we, four H used the park, we had a, a pet show, you know. Uh, but there's just so many, yeah, there's just so many things that, you know, we, I have such great memories because we, I mean, we used the park all the time, it was, it was fabulous.
Did they camp there in the summer?
Yeah, we did Girl Scout day camp up here.
Do you all have any local or countywide, uh, paddling groups or kayaking groups that, or folks that are kind of champions of like utilizing the river and Chertsey Lake?
There's a few, few that utilize Laurel Run Park.
There's a, there's a lot of kayakers. But there's, I don't know that there's an organized group, you know, Kyle's Forward and Laurel Run, a lot of people have kayaks and, and I don't know that there's an organized group.
A lot of tubing also.
Yeah.
They start at their park and go down to Laurel Run Park.
Yeah, so I, I mean, that, that's one very exceptional asset that you'll have that runs the entire, entire length of the county that, um, certainly be utilized, and, and from a program standpoint or.
Right, and, and the, the major effort that the, that's happening statewide right now and beyond is the Riverline Project, which, which will try to connect greenways and, and blueways, river, on-river activities as well as trail, adjacent trails and camping opportunities all the way along the Tennessee River from Knoxville, all the way down through Alabama and back up to, to Paducah, uh, Kentucky. And so there's, there's a huge opportunity for, for communities along that way to support recreation and economic development. Now, I know Hawkins County, of course, is more further north, uh, northeast of that, but, um, you know, that's spread. So you'll see, you'll see that happening along the Holston, along the Clinch, um, along the French Broad, so you're, you're definitely seeing that, that start to cascade up this way.
And you see the Clinch River State Park, um, which is essentially the string of pearls from southwest Virginia down through, um, in, into Al that, uh, has, uh, really taken off too. So they're, they're utilizing that, and a lot of the different counties are designating portions of the Clinches as blueways, um, which is getting a lot of, uh, a lot of attention and bringing in a lot of groups and, and pavers from different areas.
We used to have, you know, a lot of things that just sort of, because of the people that organized it just got tired of doing it, and nobody took it, we had a Renaissance fair that was.
Top notch, top notch.
Uh, that just didn't really keep continuing because, uh, you know, I wasn't involved in that, but, you know, those of us who did, like, we just got old and we begged, I mean, just be honest, we begged people to, hey, look, you know, we will teach you how to do this. And nobody was really interested in doing it. It needs work, I mean, we worked on, it, it could be a full-time job for somebody.
I think that's where if you, if we get our parks back and you get your children coming to the park again, then there're gonna be more community minded because they're gonna have those good memories like we did. And then they're gonna want to do things and, and you're gonna get them more.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and the, you know, the trends that I, that I showed you in terms of Hawkins County, the cities remain pretty, pretty level, you know, not, not a lot of growth over the next 15 years, you know. All we can say about the future is what we've seen in the past. Obviously, those are, projections are fallible, and really what it comes down to is if we increase the livability here, if we really invest in the community, there's, there's no, there's no saying what the, the, the limit is. I mean, not, not in terms of just population growth, but in terms of quality of life and retaining people here, communities that are already living here, keeping, keeping people, you know, growing into the professional careers here in Hawkins County.
Right, cause more people get more mobile because we're already, you know, getting upstairs living in our town. And so as they become more mobile, that's one of the reasons behind the dog park. Because, you know, they're saying we need somewhere besides the con- the concrete to take our dogs and run. So that was one of the, the ideas behind that, and I think as, as people continued. I mean, I think if we learned anything from COVID, we learned that, oh, we can work at home and we can be, uh, mobile and, you know, and I don't think you're getting a lot of people going back.
Well, this has been a great discussion tonight, guys, we've all learned a lot. I hope you all feel like you've learned something too.
Well, we appreciate y'all being there, it's, it's been necessary.
We're, we're starting to get, as you can see here, we've, we've sort of started to target what the improvements are. Getting some feedback from you all has sort of helped us with understanding what some of the priorities are. We're gonna come up with, uh, some draft concepts, um, and recommendations for the plan, and that will, that will all be shared, um, hopefully. Um, we'll have a chance for another meeting like this, but if not, they'll definitely be shared, uh, on, on the website, via social media, get some, get some opportunities for, for input.
So what's our time frame for putting this together, I'm sorry?
Uh, most.
I asked what website?
Oh, um, private counties, the county is the, is the major, is the major entity for this. They are the client, if you will, um, and then Rogersville and Churchill are, are, um, have some body parts.
We also have a Facebook page, Laurel Run Park, St. Clair Park Facebook page that we share things on. And I think Javabo, you put the survey and the news.
Yeah, I, I put everything in the Rock and Review. Yeah.
So we thought it out there.
You're being livestreamed as we speak.
Everybody subscribes to the Rock and Review, it's well, it's well worth the money, it's got a lot of content in there.
Subscribe to it.
And, uh, yeah, thank you all for your insight.
The timeline for.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the timeline, yes, the timeline for the master plan, this has to be completed by the end of April. So this, it, it really has to be, um, the, the, again, this project is funded under a state grant, the state provides eighty percent of the funding for the effort we're doing right now, for this, for this planning effort.
And then when would they, what's the application date for a supply for?
We don't know yet.
Oh, okay.
So, so they, they, they basically set, they basically set the contract between the, the state and Hawkins County to end up in April thirtieth, and so the plan has to be finished and adopted before then. And has to be adopted by any community that wants to go after a grant. They have to not only have the plan, but have it adopted by their legislative body. Um, and so, uh, when the grants are available, we don't know yet. Um, normally under any, I think the reason they have it end in April is because normally under any given year, historically, those grants have been available starting in April, but the last three years have been the exception to that. We actually are still, we are still finalizing and working through the grant process for grant for, for 2020 grants. I mean, ve- very few now, but, but that is still, so it's still, you know, things, things have lagged. Um, I think part of that has to do with COVID, part of it has to do with the fact that they started this planning process, which was very necessary in order to identify these improvements, but at the same time does take a little bit longer, um, for, for all the steps.
There typically are a lot of those strict restrictions on, on, on the grant funding. I mean, are things like pool liner, security.
Those absolutely, those, 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 those could all apply. Um, uh, the, the, they, and, and I will say that, um, the, the procurement process, this, this grant is a little bit different in that the procurement process, there's no, the only guidelines is that it has to follow the local procurement. So, so it's however, however you all do your, your local procurement, um, uh, is, is how they want it to be.
So if you want it, it's gotta be in the plan.
I don't wanna face another eleven million dollar.
The projects, I will say, the only caveat on the projects is they have to be in the master plan. If they're not pri- if they're not a priority in the master plan, then, then they're gonna, they're gonna come back and say, wait, why are you going after this money for this thing if it's not in the master plan? That's what we're gonna do.
So if you want it, it's gonna be in the plan.
If you want it, it's gotta be in the plan.
As you wrap it up, I wanna point one thing out, that when you had the, the picture of the different words and how big they were, was how big the response was for that certain amenity. The little tiny one, camping, that, that, that was me. Uh, I, I'm, we're campers, and I think anybody else in here who's a camper knows that if you want to camp at a nice campground, you need to book it a year in advance. And, uh, if we had a good municipal or county campground, I think it would be a money factory. Finding a location for it is a problem, I don't think Laurel Run is gonna work because it's, it's too damp. But like Churchill acquired that sixty-five acres very inexpensively as a deal. There's, there might be opportunities to acquire land sometime in a nice place. But I think that that's something that should be included in case the potential for the purchase land for that poss- for that option ar- arises, you know, and you never know. I know some people who are a little older who have large pieces of land that aren't gonna be around forever and might wanna, want to be used by the public at some point and be willing to let it go for, you know, a, a good deal. So, uh, that's my two cents worth as a camper and, and, and a person who's, who's visited, uh, municipal and, and county campgrounds and other locations that work really good. A perfect example is Tanglewood in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, if anybody wants to look that up, that place is amazing, and they, they can't keep anybody in there, I, I mean, they can't keep a vacant site all year round. So, I, I say this, every time this comes up, I, I always bring it up, and I think, uh, uh, people want me to shut up about it, but, uh. I think camping, I think, I think camping, even though it's a little tiny, a little tiny. Put it on there, just in case something happens in it, and it's a possibility.
We'll set you aside a place.
Yeah, give me a little, give me one little tiny camping word on there.
Put you right next to the pond.
Yeah.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.